You all right?
Fourteen fifteen years we've been doing this ball. Helen, please. So Allison, did you get an education on trees last night?
I did, you know, that was the most entertaining forty-five minutes of my day. Depending whether or not it's on the trees and that whole stuff.
All right. Good morning, everyone. It is nine o'clock. We'll go ahead and call the meeting of the Cottington County Board of Commissioners to order. Today is Tuesday, June twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and we'll have Commissioner Gable lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
What's with us to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for virtue stands? One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Gable. Reminder to please silence your cell phone so they do not disrupt the meeting. Call for public comment. Public comment may be submitted in person or via telephone at six oh five eight eight two six two four eight, or by calling six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. Commissioners, any conflict of interest items?
No.
No.
Looking for an action to approve the June twenty-fourth agenda.
Can I just add one thing on to? For the closing audit conference with South Dakota Legislative Audit, just the part action to sign the county's letter of representation for said audit.
You want that amended on the?
Yes, yes, just add that as part of that closing audit.
Item number six. Okay, can add that.
Good.
Motion.
You approve.
Motion by McElhaney, second by Gable with the amended amendment on item number six. Action to approve the June twenty-fourth agenda. We just did that. Action to approve the June seventeenth minutes. Oh, did we not vote?
No.
I'm sorry. A little out of sorts this morning. Okay, we need to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, item number five, action to approve the June seventeenth minutes.
Follow.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Schwer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to item number six, this is the closing audit conference with the South Dakota Department of Legislative Audit. Brenda.
Kathy.
All right. Good morning, ladies. Have you? Turn your mics on there for us. Just push a little round button, yep. And identify yourselves and who you're with.
Casey Ingerham with Department of Legislative Audit.
And I'm Natalie Zerbal.
Morning.
Um, we are here for the closing conference for the fiscal compliance audit for the year ended December. Excuse me, thirty-first of twenty-four. And this one's quick. Everything looks good. There were no material items found. And there were less significant items throughout the course that we discussed with Brenda, but nothing material that needed to be written on management letter. We've already gone over the oral comments. Brenda has a copy of that and our formal adjustments that were made. Other than that, it looks good. Do you guys have questions for us?
Good.
Well, I appreciate your, uh, your report as well written and and I actually kind of understood it.
Good, I'm glad.
So do we receive a letter like a grade, like an A plus or something?
I mean, I could write it on the top. Like A plus. Okay, yeah.
All right. No grades.
No grades.
Yeah, we passed.
Fast or fail.
That's good.
And as soon as I get this uploaded, um, Russ has the report ready to release. So once I get this uploaded in, everything will be.
Okay. Any more questions, comments?
Where's the, is the report posted in the state website or legislative audit?
It will be posted once, um, we get everything certified in, then Brenda will go and approve it and then it will be posted on our website. An electronic copy.
It will be posted just like this, or will it be posted in abbreviated form or?
It'll, it'll be detailed like that, just like that. Yes, yes. And if you have any question, please let us know. They'll explain further.
Very good. Thank you.
That's it.
All right then. I would just like to add, um, really have enjoyed working with you guys.
Thank you. It was nice. Thank you for all your help.
Yeah, very pleasant, very helpful for me as well. Learned quite a bit as we went, so it was all good. Yeah.
Let's see, you got it four or five years, huh?
Or two.
Or two.
Two.
I'm planting a seed anyway.
Right.
Or do you have one? Okay, perfect. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
So do you need a motion to approve?
There's no action.
Yes.
Yep. So move.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that was the amended on the motion. Okay. All right, so a motion.
So move.
Dialer.
I'll, I'll second.
Second by Lee.
For the chair to sign the, uh, reports.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Normally, it's a lot smoother than this. I apologize. All right, emergency management, monthly report. Good morning, Andrew.
Hi, Andrew. I guess I punched the button. She turned it off.
Morning.
Morning. You did win softball last night, right?
Yes, we did.
Glad to hear.
Really? Okay. Over the last month, Sherri and I participated in a family assistance center tabletop with, uh, it included school administrators, uh, members from fire department, police department, sheriff's office, Prairie Lakes. Just a, a good overview of, uh, kind of how we would plan, uh, family assistance center. Uh, if the incident, uh, required it. I coordinated a local fire chiefs meeting, included all the fire chiefs from, from the county. Uh, covered a range of topics. Uh, I mean, we had, we had a, an agenda, but I mean, it was a free flowing conversation and, uh, I thought it was a productive one as well. Uh, kind of talked about training, joint training possibilities. What our local needs and resources were, equipment, state fire school, county burn ordinance, uh, like what we do differently during dry weather, like if, if it comes back here. Uh, so that went well. Uh, FD and I worked together. Uh, we now have all the Watertown outdoor warning sirens working, uh, correctly. Uh, the search and rescue pickups got them all serviced. Uh, several windows were old and kind of losing the seal and not very good. Uh, so we replaced several windows out at the Cole Hanes Center. Um, search and rescue had a scenario-based recovery exercise at Pelican Lake. So we were able to, um, deploy our team and our divers, uh, like much like we would in a real world scenario as opposed to, you know, like dragging the dummy out there and, and having them, you know, just dive and be a little bit more casual about it. This one was a little bit, uh, uh, more realistic. There were a couple, uh, callouts, uh, for the search and rescue team for missing persons. Uh, those, uh, both ended, uh, well. Uh, they also had an open house. Sherri attended that, um, well, she's and yeah, it was well attended, probably something that, uh, continues after this year. And then, uh, Sherri and I did a crisis track drill. This is the, the new, um, program that we're going to be using for our damage assessments. So essentially, we just entered notional damage into the program, uh, along with, you know, measurements, uh, map location, photo, description of the damage and so forth. Uh, just continuing to get more familiar with the program, uh, forward.
Is that a FEMA thing?
Uh, it's, uh, it's how the state's going to be doing their, uh, damage assessments moving forward. So, yeah, I guess pending your questions, uh, that's what I have for this month.
Okay.
Uh, one point, uh, just for, um, the public for information. So I work with Andrew, uh, on the, uh, storm sirens, the outdoor alerting storm sirens. And, uh, we had a couple that had some issues this spring, which we got resolved. And, uh, we're happy to report that they're all up and running properly at this time. So especially after, uh, the bad storms that hit North Dakota. Uh, just a few days ago, the public can, uh, know that, that we're keeping them up and, uh, they're working.
Yeah, and I mean, if anybody notices one that's, you know, not working correctly, I mean, we can't watch all of them every week. Uh, let us know and the sooner the better and, uh, we'll try to get it resolved. I mean, either they can call either the fire department or emergency management office and between the two of us, uh, we work pretty closely together.
All the dogs in town will be happy now, huh?
Exactly, yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Moving on to the sheriff's report. Morning, Brad.
Morning, how's it going?
Good.
Pass one, grab one, pass one down.
We'll get started on the first page there. Our commissary monthly balance sheet for the month of May. Uh, at the time, we did a snapshot here, the bank balance into May was eighteen thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and ninety-two cents. And there was five thousand ninety-three dollars and forty-three cents in the lobby booking kiosk there for a grand total of twenty-four thousand and one dollars and thirty-five cents. To break that down a little bit more, of that money, one thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-five cents was resident balances. Four thousand seven hundred and forty-seven and seventy-seven cents was commissary items, tax that wasn't dispersed yet, and the funds balance seventeen thousand five fifty-five sixty-three. If you jump down to the bottom there, you'll see our commission that we brought in, a commissary commission, we brought in one thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars, twenty-six cents. Phone commission, one thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. And kiosk commission, five hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-six cents for a grand total of three thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-three cents. We jumped to the next page here, we'll go over our monthly balance sheet for the checking account. For the month of May, the bank balance was end of May, eighteen thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars and six cents. Uh, if you jump down to the middle there, you'll see the fingerprint fees collected. We collected forty dollars in fingerprint fees, copy fees, eight dollars, sheriff's fees, nine thousand seventy-seven and eleven cents. Executions collected, uh, five thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-five cents miscellaneous accounts, two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and warrant fees, three hundred and twenty-five dollars for a grand total of seventeen thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-six cents, which leaves us back to our eight eighty-nine fifty, which we started with. Leo, pull up on the big screen here. The next page there, we'll kind of go over some of the activity for the sheriff's office here, the top few. Uh, for the month of May, sheriff's office responded to five hundred and eighty-nine cases and calls for service. Uh, there's eleven accident reports that were completed, ninety-three warrants were served, two hundred and sixty-four civil papers were served, and four thousand two hundred and forty-eight transport miles. That was a total of twelve trips and eighteen people that we transported in the month of May. Go down to the middle there, we'll talk about some of the jail activity that we've been seeing. Uh, the average daily population for the month of May was sixty point two nine. Our high average daily population was sixty-four. And that was on the seventeenth. Our low ADP was fifty-three and that was on the thirteenth. Um, on the twenty-four seven program, on the SCRAM bracelet, we had fourteen participants when we took the snapshot here. We had twelve people on the remote breath, forty-three people on the twice daily PVT and forty-five people on the twice weekly UA and zero people on the sweat patch for a grand total of one hundred and fourteen people in our twenty-four seven program. And you can see there was two hundred and two bookings, or just a slightly more than the month of April, but if you look, it's kind of staying about that average, so. If you jump on down to the bottom there, Lee, a little bit more. Uh, some of the money that we brought in for the out of county contracts, we collected seventeen thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, work release fees, we collected one thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. Twenty-four seven fees, we collected seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and SCRAM fees, we collected two thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars. Any questions on that before?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the money brought in from the out of county. And, oh, you know, I'm just backing up, you know, since we raised the per day charges, the the numbers have dropped a little bit, but the mother's still there.
The
Pretty close anyway.
Some of our, our, uh, out of county contract numbers of inmates that are coming in has dropped. There's some counties that have went elsewhere. Uh, but like you say, looking at the, the money, it's, it's dropped a little bit, but it's
Pretty much.
It's still pretty close to what we were bringing in before, so. Yeah, we definitely seen a little bit of decrease of inmates coming in from out of counties, so. Just a couple of things here. We did, remember, it was a couple of months ago, we talked about, we were going to apply for a courthouse security grant. Um, we did apply for that and we rewarded nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. I should be getting that award letter here soon. When I do, I'll get it to Brenda. Um, that'll be a pay for about a third of the project that Steve is looking to do, to upgrade the camera system and do some of the upgrades here at the courthouse that, for this year, so, um, just figured I'd let you know, we did get awarded that.
Is it, is it good to do this work now as we move towards building a new one?
Well, like you say, this, this is actually for the courthouse, not for the detention center.
Jail, just courthouse.
Just the courthouse, courthouse security, yep.
All right, that makes sense.
It's the annual UJS grant that counties can apply for, for court facility upgrades, security upgrades.
We looked at kind of what we've been doing and actually had them come in and do a little survey of what we've been doing and we're really close to the top of the list in South Dakota of what we're taking proactive measures to stay ahead of the game and making sure that we're keeping our courthouse safe and secure and.
What's been going on around the country, we need to pay attention to that.
Yep, so, uh, some of the things happening in the sheriff's office here, coming up here in July, we're working on doing a uh, sheriff's youth academy to kind of get our, our kids involved a little bit more in law enforcement. We're partnering with our boys and girls club here in town to kind of help facilitate some of that and do that. We're going to spend a couple of days kind of start small this year and maybe grow going forward. Uh, something like this, we're kind of envisioning maybe having some of these students and kids come in and learn about what the sheriff's office does. Uh, maybe show them some handcuffs, show them the, um, uh, crime scene, maybe set up a crime scene and do some fingerprinting, lift some prints, uh, just do some of the stuff that the sheriff's office is involved with and what law enforcement does. Our goal is to help pique interest into this for the future and um, because of course someday someone's going to have to fill our shoes and try to help keep that interest going. So that'll be happening here in July. Fireworks season is upon us. Uh, that's one big thing I hear a lot from people is fireworks. Uh, the legal season for fireworks is June twenty-seventh through July sixth. I like to kind of share that with everybody so they all know that the legal times that you can shoot fireworks. It's a little more wet this year. We don't have a burn ban in place, so, uh, do try to remind people to make sure that they're being safe, making good decisions and when you go out, make sure you have permission to be where you're supposed to be shooting fireworks, so. Uh, don't be going out on the county roads, township roads on the edge of town here and shooting them off as people are coming and um, that is illegal, so. Fireworks season.
Your favorite time of year.
Busy, busy time of the year, exactly. And, um, I just sent out the invoices to our rural schools for our SRO billing for next year. And haven't gotten that back yet, but just shot those invoices out. The first year went really good, it was successful. Um, got a lot of good feedback from our school administrators and we had a little joint training meeting here at the office after school here, after school was out of session and kind of did a little training with them of some of the things that law enforcement can do and our reach and kind of built relationships there a little bit, so that seemed to went.
Professor, there are four or five schools.
Three, three rural. Yep, Waverly, Florence, and Henry.
Have you approached any, any of the others? Is that it?
Uh, those are the only three that are out in the rural outside of Watertown.
What about Wallace?
Wallace does not have a school.
Well, that's right, they don't. They, they all go to Webster, I think, yeah.
Yep, uh, Webster or Florence.
Straight.
Yep.
Good.
So we have all the, all the rural schools are involved with our program.
Good.
That's all I have, I guess.
Okay.
Unless we have many.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Sheriff. Hey, Brad, since you brought up the fireworks thing, where, you know, you talked about where they can't light them off, but where can they light them off?
In town here at ANZA is, I know they're allowed to go there. I don't know the times. Is that?
So specifically out in the county is what I'm referring to.
In the county?
Yeah.
You would, uh, have to ask the, the farmers or make sure you have a place. There is no designated place that you can actually.
Like private property.
Yeah, we're talking a place to go, go ask a farmer, uh, private property, make sure you have permission to go to those places.
Okay.
Uh, make sure that you're being mindful of livestock. We have a lot of cattle. In the past, we've had, um, people go out and talking about going out on the roads, shooting off fireworks, they'll spook the cattle and they can take off and run through fences and keep on going, so. Uh, make sure that we're not going out on the roads and make sure we're being mindful of where we
Clean up.
And clean up, yes.
Yeah, okay. Right.
The, the dates that you can shoot fireworks in the state of South Dakota is June twenty-seventh to the first Sunday after the July fourth, and this year happens to be July sixth, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right.
All right, the city will be coming out with something in the future on where you can light them off, so.
Typically at ANZA, but they'll, they'll be all something.
Right, right.
Thanks, Brad.
Okay, moving on to item number eight, discussion possible action to approve the human resources contract effective July first, twenty twenty-five. Human Resources Director, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. All right, um, so the current contract that I am working on expires the end of this month in June, so this is the new one, it would be effective um, July first through, um, next June thirtieth. I think this would be the sixth, um, contract that I've had with you. We, um, did make some changes per their request, um, to kind of expand the scope of work, um, starting this next year, so there are um, items three through eight and the copy of what you have has been added, so includes um, onboarding process with new employees, offboarding process with exiting employees, managing insurance and benefit programs for the county, um, working with SDPAA. Um, when they do their loss control audit, ensure those recommendations are implemented, managing and handling workers' compensation claims and then, um, developing some different checklists and processes and procedures to make sure everything gets completed and turned into the auditor's office for entry. Um, the new rate on this with those additional, um, duties would be fifty-five hundred a month. And I think everything else stays the same.
Any questions? Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by McElhaney. Any discussion?
I would just like to add that, um, after, uh, well, we, we had a lot of discussion in the fact that this we think is, um, going to kind of pinpoint, we're looking at the fact of going to possibly a full-time HR position and the discussion was, um, with those additions in your contracts that this would probably be a good, uh, like pilot program to see if that's where we're at and, and what we're going to do in the future, so just a little add-on.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Ben.
The only thing that I would like to add is last night I had a, I received a phone call from one of our department heads and, and, um, you know, in discussion with the contract and some of the amendments that have been made to this contract, Natalie, you know, she suggested that maybe it would be nice to have like a quarterly, just a quarterly session with the department heads.
Sure.
Like as a group meeting, just to have everybody sit down and talk about projects that they're working on in their office and make sure that everybody's kind of aware of what's going on. And I think that that's probably a good idea. And it's probably something that maybe a commissioner or myself would like to attend and just kind of sit in and and have a discussion with our department heads to make sure that everybody's on the same page and.
Yep, we can add that. I'm fine with that. That sounds good.
Maybe a quarterly would probably be sufficient, I'm thinking, so.
I think so.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, so I'll just add at the end quarterly department head meeting um, with Commissioner.
Yeah.
Attendance.
Yeah, that's, that's a really, I think that's a very good suggestion because it just gives our awareness, you know, all the other departments just kind of know what the county's doing as a whole.
Yeah.
That's just good.
Yeah. It's just a good idea, sharing and, you know, team building, uh, leadership type exercise, so I think it's good.
Good suggestion.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. I'll get you that revision.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, number nine, action to approve abatement applications.
Done today.
Number ten, action to approve claims for payment.
So we have a couple of different ones. If we could get two different motions for it. One is for our salary, but the first one will be, um, uh, claim for Baymont um, in the amount of ninety-four fifteen and then Clubhouse Hotel and Suites for sixteen hundred nine dollars and sixty-six cents. These are both for, one, I believe, was for Lee for that, um, that, yeah, your cyber thing. And the other one was for two different conferences that individuals attended. Total amount one thousand seven oh three eighty-one for that one.
Okay.
You want a separate motion?
Separate, yeah, because the other one is salaries.
I'll still prove.
Motion, motion by McElhaney, second by Gable. Any discussion on that?
Now, is, I understand, uh, Clubhouse does honor state rates now. Is this state rate?
No, I've been working with them. That's why this is a little delayed. I'm still going to work with them or waiting for them to call me back and then I'm having a time, so hopefully we can get a refund or a credit because no, we did not get state rate.
I was out for the, uh, state, uh, retirement board meeting. It was mentioned that they were accepting state rate.
I don't know when they started, but they did not at this point, but I'm working on that.
Okay.
So yes. Waiting for a call back.
Okay, all in favor
Oh, yeah.
Of that motion and second.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two there.
Then we have the June salary claims in the amount of eight hundred and fifteen thousand ninety-six dollars and forty-eight cents.
We'll do prove.
Motion by McElhaney, second by Schwer. He just about beat you, but all right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
No budget supplements.
Pay the bills this month, that's good. Action to approve personnel changes, number twelve.
Okay, so most of these are step increases. We have one for the state's attorney to go from current step one to step three fifty-nine, or fifty-six forty to fifty-nine twenty-five. And then all the rest of these are step increases. Uh, Tim Johnson out at extension, Becky Goans at extension, all the amounts and everything will be in the minutes, so. Um, Sarah Ammon at the health, um, public health nurse. Brad Howell, Sheriff. I should have had that stuff. Oh, they're all sticking together. Brent Solom, Sheriff's Department, uh, Bana Inks at Sheriff's Department, Aaron at Sheriff's Department, Megan Swanson, Sheriff's Department, Matt Blackwelder, uh, Chief Correctional Officer Dave Curtis, or the Security Officer, Steve Lowry, Deputy Sheriff, Dakota Dodd, Deputy Sheriff, Travis Gussman, Deputy Sheriff Gavin Wright, Deputy Sheriff Rusty Matthews, Deputy Sheriff, Jared Olson, Deputy Sheriff Sergeant, Adam Reed, Deputy Sheriff, Trevor Schimmel, Deputy Sheriff, Shane Yoles, Deputy Sheriff, Chandler Flowers, Deputy Sheriff, Morgan Wormedell, Correctional Officer, Shawna Carter, Correctional Officer, Maria Eskamalia, Correctional Sergeant, Julie Galiseth, Correctional Officer, Austin Hanson, Correction Officer, Melissa Holquist, Correction Officer, Wes Jennings, Correction Officer, Jennifer Matac, Correction Officer, Sean Nils, Correction Officer Sergeant, Kelly Alrick, Correction Officer, Charlie Russell, Public Safety Support Tech, part-time, Kayla Schumacher, Correction Officer, Lindsay Sprickers, Correction Officer, Raislyn Chatter, Correction Officer, Connor Anderson, Correction Officer, Stuckes, Ellen Solberg Ellingson, Correction Officer, Tristan Coyle, Correction Officer, Lori Mills, Correction Officer, Sophia Toll, Correction Officer, Matt Fiat, Correction Officer, Sherri Howell, Deputy Director in Emergency Management, Andrew Delgado, Director of Emergency Management, Martin Cunningham, Payroll Specialist, Auditor's Office Bond. Martin Cunningham, payroll specialist, auditor's office, Bonnie Mullingraff, accountant, administrator, auditor's office, Brenda Hampton, auditor. I think that's all of our step increases for this week.
All right, we'll take those one at a time.
Yeah. Start off with one.
I'll take them all in one motion.
Move to.
Motion by Gable, second by McElhaney. Any further discussion?
Well, I think fifteen years, this is the first time we've ever gone through each one. You know, they've, they've been suggested. It's, I don't know if we need to do that. It's all right. Uh, if we have an opportunity, just like we did now, to recognize our employees and, and their thing. Uh, but we're killing a lot of trees. Uh, you know, maybe we could do this, uh, via software or something, you know, rather than, I don't know, what's the other, uh?
Some of them I don't always get before your packet, you know, some kind of come in, it's always on the agenda. So I mean, I could send them that way, but you won't always have all that in your packet. But I mean.
I mean, how much, how much time does it take to put all this together? I mean, it's.
Oh, well, I mean, it's, it, we still need it for record. It goes in their personnel files. So.
Yeah.
But.
Would it be, would it be possible once we get the, uh, the new time card system up and running to like, would that be able to produce a, like a two-page report of the thirty-some names instead of like individual papers like that?
So basically that's an employee action form, right?
Right, but we still need it in the personnel file. We need documentation and signed by the department heads and the board for approval. So I, I don't know that we'll be able to skip this form.
Makes sense.
So.
All right.
More paper.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we'll plant three extra trees.
Emerald dashboard trees that are coming down that we're using. So, all right. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? At motion carries. Item number thirteen is action to approve travel requests.
We have, uh, couples of staff from emergency management, uh, attending training and you have all the information in your package.
We'll get approved.
Second.
Motion by McElhaney, second by Gable. Any further discussion? Those are budgeted items. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On to number fourteen already, public notices, a possible quorum of commissioners could be in attendance at for this next week.
Well, tomorrow, and I don't know if any of you are going, I will be there at the step meeting, first district. Um, that's just a review of the proposed uh, road, road work that's going to be done by department transportation over the next year. And we just, they just bring in the the whole plan of action for the next year. That's kind of interesting to see what road they're going to be uh, for up. Let's hope eighty-one gets done between all that, huh? Uh, let's see. That's all I have.
Steve?
In case somebody, we need tomorrow, Thursday night.
Mm-hmm.
At the extension complex, if anybody comes.
What meeting was that? Oh, okay. Emerald Ashmore meeting.
Yeah.
Thursday night? Extension complex, what time?
I think it's six.
It's thirty? Okay. That's a public meeting. Oh, that's right. It's open to everybody. Yeah.
It's going to be exciting.
The new abbreviation at least.
Yeah.
More trees.
Yeah, unfortunately. Okay. All right. Number fifteen, any old business? Anybody have any old business?
Mr. Chair, so.
I should give them.
The advertisement forbid selected in Saturday, so that, so our deadline was yesterday too. So that's, that's good. Actually though, a lot of the, the contractors look at a whole, the, the whole system for looking at that, that's mentioned in the ad for bid for, uh, people who look at construction documents want to bid them. So that's, that's in and we have another meeting. Another design meeting, separate and online with, um, you know, most design team. Sheriff and jail.
So, and that's still, we still have the hope of doing a groundbreaking about mid to the end of July, roughly?
Hopefully.
Mm-hmm.
But the, the real thing is, you know, I, I, it, as far as what I'm being told, it's, uh, we're still in decent shape to get, um, you know, the envelope built before the snow flies. We'll, we'll see all the bids come in and, um.
And in this week, Saturday, maybe for next, obviously, it was about, is that, a couple more times.
Yeah. Thanks.
Any more old business? New business? Nothing for new business? Anything for the open? Public comments? Don't see any on the phone? Public comments? No public comments. Commissioner comments? Commissioner comments? Need for executive session? We do have a need. Personnel and contracts. So personnel issues is section one and contractual matters is section two of SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two.
Oh, we're going to exec session.
Second.
Motion by Johnson to go into exec, second by Schwer. All in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned into exec.